Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 12th session of the Bellingham City Council. A few announcements. On October 26th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, there will be a public hearing to consider a petition to annex approximately 163.5 acres of land. On October 26th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, there will be a public hearing on the city of Bellingham's 2016 revenue forecast, including the property tax levy. On November 9th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, there will be a public hearing on a periodic update to the city's criticals area ordinance. And as always, the Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meeting Acts. Would the reporting journalism class from Western Washington University lead us in the flag salute?
Go ahead. We just testify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jane Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Liloquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Terry Bornammon.
Here.
Okay, we'll now go to our 15-minute public comment period. Michael, can you grab me the list there? Okay, there's one name on the list, and the name is Mitchell Matthews. He, he, don't worry about it. Just go ahead, sir. You don't need to sign up, sir. I'll call your name, I'll call you up afterward. Go ahead, go ahead, sir.
My name is Mitchell Matthews, and I'm representing Uber Technologies. First off, council, thank you very much for hearing me today before you here. I'm the senior manager for operations in Washington State. I'm replacing Jonathan Hopkins, who is taking a well-deserved vacation, who you've been dealing with previously. So, my team and I are looking very forward to continuing to build a strong working relationship with the city of Bellingham as we move towards a potential launch of Uber within this market. And we look forward to having ride-sharing in the city under the Uber platform. I'm going to take this opportunity to speak to three items in the proposed ordinance. The first is, I would just like to confirm that Uber would like to work with council and Bellingham city staff on penalties when you do reopen the taxi ordinance in the future, as well as this, so we can work together to find a more amenable solution to that. The second item I'd like to speak to is background checks. We thank you for your decision at last council hearing two weeks ago that preserves Section 6.55050, paragraph C as is. The background check provider who Uber uses is nationally accredited by the National Association of Professional Background Check Providers and is limited by background Washington State law and uses the Fair Credit Consumer Act, which is specifically written to cover the kinds of background checks that Uber would be using for potential driver partners in The, lastly, the item I would like to speak to is with respect to insurance. Section 655070, as written, allows for Uber to operate and maintain insurance coverage under Washington State law. We'd, however, we would like to propose one minor amendment to the wording of the ordinance, which would closely reflect the intent of SB 5550 and permit the TNC and/or the TNC driver to maintain insurance. And I do have a copy if council would like to see, and I can circulate it around.
Give it to our clerk over there. She can hand it out.
I'll wait till everybody gets their amendment there.
Okay.
Perfect. The amendment as provided includes the addition of the word "or" to the clause. And as written, it would say, "The TNC and," with the insertion of "or," "TNC driver shall comply with the automobile liability insurance requirements contained in Washington laws of 2015, Chapter 236, Section 1 and 2, as enacted or subsequently amended." Washington State law is modeled after the insurance compromise model and would allow the TNC to maintain coverage on behalf of the TNC provider, or it would permit the TNC driver to maintain coverage on their own behalf, provided by the Office of the Insurance Commissioner, should it approve an offering of an insurance policy that recognizes that a person is acting as a driver for a commercial transportation services provider. So we would respectfully ask that you consider that amendment as we move forward.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And that closes up my testimony.
Okay, thank you. Next, sir, you wanted to speak?
Well, I-
Come on, come on up, if you want to speak. You have to get in the microphone. We'll find out. Give us your name for the-
My name is Jim Cunningham. I live here in Bellingham.
Uh-huh.
Basically, I just came down because I am an Uber driver in-
Oh, okay.
-Seattle. I commute to Seattle, and I mainly got on with them because I knew they were looking to come into Bellingham. And I'm very interested in working with Uber and the rideshare program, and it works really well. I just want to let you know.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, next.
Anybody else? Going, going, go- no, just kidding. Come on up, Wendy, I'm just kidding.
Um, as elected officials, you make a lot of very important land use decisions, but among them, one of the most important that you make have to do with our environmental regulations, and those are found in our critical area ordinance. And this afternoon, the staff was here talking about some of the highlight issues from the critical area ordinance hearing that they're going to be holding on November 9th. And I'm here to ask you to consider having at least one, hopefully two, work sessions prior to that. You know, it's not unusual for me to see staff come here and give updates to the council, but I don't normally see them doing it right before there's going to be a public hearing. And I think that reflects the complexity of what you're going to be asked to review. And given how important it is, I think it's really important that, you know, you all have a solid understanding. And I think what you should know and what wasn't stated was the planning commission couldn't make a decision. They, you know, they were hearing different arguments from different people that all sounded credible, and they were just, we're just going to send it forward. And I, I think that says something. And I participated fully in this process. Every single argument that they raised were arguments that I had addressed that, that I don't see exactly the city's way. And those aren't issues that I'm going to be able to address in three minutes during a public hearing, and they're not issues that you're going to be able to fully understand in three minutes from people during a public hearing. I mean, you're, you're having to look at geologically hazardous areas, wetlands, and habitat and wildlife, and that's a lot to chew off. It's a whole lot to chew off. And I can tell you, I've identified at least two compliance issues. Specifically, there's one with regards to habitat corridors. That's a requirement in the GMA that the city has not satisfied. And, you know, we can get into a lot of other little nuances. The staff represented that there was best available science that they used, and I, I can prove that they didn't use best available science, but I can't do it in three minutes. And I can write all this up like I did for them, but, you know, I don't, if it doesn't make sense to you, you're not going to read it, and it's not going to be meaningful. And I think this is important enough that I'd really like the council and the public to have more of an opportunity to delve into these issues before we make such an important decision. And I think it would be really helpful if it was possible to take comments from people that participated in the public process before the planning commission, because I know for, they had a work session, and only two people's comments were considered, and they weren't mine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, we will now move on to our present, one presentation tonight, and that is the mayor's presentation of the 2016 supplemental budget.
Kelly Linville, Mayor. It's not going to be a very exciting presentation, nor is it going to be very long. Basically, I want to give you the high points, where, what the funds look like, the projects that we're adding, give a little explanation about the whys for the deficit increasing slightly. And then, we're going to do what we did last year, which is meet and have the department heads come in subsequent Mondays. I don't think it will take a real long time, because there's not a lot of changes that we're making. And then, obviously, the council might have some things that they'd like to bring up. And I actually have one proposition to ask you if you would consider too, that's not included in this budget. So, with that, I'm going to start. As you know, and you know, and as the public hopefully knows, we did a biennial budget this year. What happens with the biennial budget is, we budget for two years, we write work plans for two years, and midway, we make changes that, some of these have been added by the council, and some of them have been requested by the agency, or the departments, that makes sense to get the work plans implemented. So that's, that's what this is going to entail. If you look at the, the changes in revenue, we have increased general fund by about $417,000, $18,000. Obviously, all other funds are the big part of our budget. Our general fund budget is the smaller part of our budget. So we do have an increase in funds from what we first predicted of $5,575,000. Expenditures, we've added a million, maybe almost a million-one in expenditures from the general fund, 5.6 million from the all other funds, and there's a total of 6.7 million. And do this, subtract the last two columns, and you'll figure out we're about 1.2 million He likes to say "in the whole." I like to say shortfall, but it's the same thing. Okay, let's go through, briefly through the departments. First of all, the fire expenses, as you can see there, the council gave direction for us to make the community paramedic program permanent. I think that's a very good addition to our budget. I believe that over time, and I think we've seen some evidence to it now, that it actually is going to save us money and save the emergency room money. So that was, I think that was a good expenditure. And then, of course, we had the Fire Boat that we purchased. You all have had a chance to see that. Fire boats come with equipment, or they don't come with equipment, so you have to buy equipment for them. So that's what the Fire Boat expenditure, and we'll explain it in detail on Monday. And then, we had, did do a training academy for nine new recruits. You got a presentation on that today, very eager, young people, because I still think 34 is young, that have, have been accepted into the Bellingham Fire Department. And so, with them comes the need for equipment and gear and training, and those are all things that are included in the new recruits. Now, those are all included in the budget, so those weren't nine new positions in fire, but those were nine positions that we filled, or will be filled as we have these retirements. Police Department, not, not very big changes. Most of the changes, obviously, for both police and fire, are in the general fund, because police and fire are mostly general, they're our biggest general fund categories. The .5 FTE is an administrative position that completes the transfer of the chief's administrative assistant to an exempt position. She was half-union and half-exempt, and this takes care of that transfer, which I think is appropriate. I, I think that the chief needs an exempt employee, as I have exempt employees, as you have exempt employees for your, your assistance. There's also pieces of equipment, vehicles. We are going, making a $50,000 investment in body cameras. I, I don't know how you feel about it, but the fact that we had body camera evidence on a recent concern we had, I think justifies the idea that this is a good thing to have. And I don't know if many of you watch, how much news you watch, but the body cameras in different communities are also now giving information that both protects the police officers and protects the public. So I think that is a good investment. And then, finally, we have a SERF program where we have to all pay in for computers so that we'll be able to buy the computers when they're necessary. This is the first year that the police have participated in this program, so that meant an investment for them, so that they could be buying ahead. Jack?
Just to verify, it looks like there's a math problem there. Is that 27 million for proposed expenditures?
I'm sorry, where?
For police, proposed expenditures for general fund.
Yeah, we made a mistake. That's my fault. I'll fix that. I'll send out the corrected number tomorrow.
Okay, great.
I'm not looking at the numbers, I'm looking at the information, so thank you. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation, we have some, I'm on Parks and Recreation, am I supposed to be somewhere else? Okay. Let's go back to Planning and Community Development. The majority of the money that is coming out of, for the Planning and Community Development Department is coming for the economic development incentives. This is part of implementing downtown Bellingham redevelopment. I think you had a briefing on what the incentives are, and you've approved those. Well, I don't even know if you had to approve them, but you discussed them. And so, that's, that's $250,000. That's a big investment, but we also think that it'll be very effective in making sure that we see our downtown development plan get implemented. We have the tourism grants. Of course, those don't, do not come out of the general fund. The rental registration inspections do not come out of the general fund, and the 1.5 FTE does not come out of the general fund. So I think most of those are dedicated funds within the Planning and Economic Development, I mean, and Community Development Department. And then, Parks and Recreation, the majority of those funds are within Parks and Rec. We own the sportsplex. It has a bad roof, and we, there, we need to, we need to fix it. It's ours. We're also looking at what can we do to start putting money ahead when things like this happen, because this was unexpected at this time, but it's certainly not unexpected that we would have a roof that needs repair. We're spending approximately $100,000 on the Cordada Master Plan. That's for the new park in the Cordada area, which, as you know, the neighbors are real excited about, about getting. Locust Beach, we're having some discussions about the advancement of the Locust Beach investments. There is a grant that they got, about $330,000, and they're moving forward with some improvements there. The neighbors are very interested in some kind of a restroom. And, and then finally, the Bloedel Donovan docks, we can just talk about this more, too, but there's a safety issue, because the docks are separating from the launch. As long as we're going to launch boats, we have to make sure nobody gets their foot, their hand, their head, or any other part of their body caught there. So there's an investment in fixing those docks, plugging that gap, so that nobody gets The street fund, we have, I guess these come out of the Public Works Department? It says street fund, but, so there's no general fund in the next two, but there's a list of improvements we're making through public work. So there's improvements on West Maplewood, some increased crack seal and bridge work. There's the Sunset Meridian Oregon and Britton Water Quality retrofit projects. And we're probably going to be holding off a couple of the bigger projects for a couple of years, for two reasons. One, we want to get funds built up so that we have the money to do the bigger projects. And secondly, I think we have a little bit of road fatigue all across the city, because between the Chestnut Bridge and Alabama and other projects that we've been doing, we've had a lot of disruptions. And I think in general, the public's been pretty tolerant of that, but it is hard, especially where you're affecting people getting to their houses or having people come to businesses. So we'll have Ted talk a little bit more about the plans for public work. So with that, those are the major changes. And here is the budget calendar and the key, key dates. I'm presenting this today on the afternoon, evening of the 26th. In the afternoon, we'll have a budget work session, so please, if you have questions, specific questions, this is when you might want to come prepared, because we'll have the staff available for you. Also, if you have any proposals yourselves, we have the budget proposal sheet that we had. I'm not encouraging people to do a whole lot of amendments, but I realize that things come up that you've, that you have wanted to look at. Brian, you have that sheet. So Brian will send that out to Marie, and she can share it with all of you. In the evening, we're going to hopefully take action on, not take action, but discuss the revenue forecast. The 9th, we have the public comment on the budget, and introduce the property tax ordinance. The property tax ordinance is the 1% that we're allowed to take by state law every year, and normally, the council has taken that. It helps us keep, try to keep pace with the services that our public expects us to do. The 16th, we'll hopefully have a public hearing. I think I made a mistake up there. The public hearing's on the revenue forecast. I made two mistakes?
There's two public hearings.
There's two public hearings, okay. I, I, let's Brian talk about that.
So basically, we put the schedule together based around your scheduled meetings, and so it's a little bit earlier, but to have this wrapped up by December 14th of the evening, we have to introduce the budget for first and second reading on December 7th. So the public hearing would start on November 16th, and then would remain open for written public comment all the way up till December 7th, but the holidays in there, and you don't have any other meetings. So that's why the schedule looks like that. But there are two public hearings, one on the revenue forecast, and then another one on all of the proposed changes in the budget, so.
Okay.
Okay, is everyone else clear that we have two public hearings, and they're two separate public hearings? And then, hopefully, we'll get it adopted on the 14th. There are not, like I said, I'm not proposing any big changes. I do have one that I want to talk to you about in the public safety arena, and I've had at least one member talk to me about something else they might be interested in. So when you get your sheet, fill it out, and then we'll try to also put a figure on it, you know, how much is it going to cost? And if there's a revenue source that you know of, or something that you'd like to look at, that's an option, or we have other options, too. So, any-
Any questions for the mayor?
Any process questions for me? Michael?
When do we get our copy of the draft budget? Next week, or?
The only prepared document is online currently, and I can send you the same spreadsheet that, it's just a spreadsheet because of the, what is being proposed. So you have the adopted 16, and it's just the modifications to-
So it won't be a new budget?
No.
No. Okay, thank you.
Now, that, we're saving money on printing this year, too.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We will now go on to our first public hearing. Public hearing to declare certain real property at 301 and 315 North Samish Way, surplus to the city of Bellingham.
Good evening. Tara Sandin with the Planning and Community Development Department, here with Darby Cowles. We are, we have two action items, two hearings for you this evening, both on surplus property. It's kind of coincidental that we bring them both to you this evening. They were acquired at very different times. One was acquired just a little over a month ago now, and that's the Aloha property on Samish Way. And the other was acquired in 1946, and we're not quite sure exactly why, but we've known we've, we've had this piece of real estate in Old Town for at least, you know, we've known about it for about 15 years at least. And, and the timing is just aligning. And so, for efficiency purposes, and in my division, we're going to run this process kind of at the same time on both pieces of real estate. One of the first things we need to do is, is have you guys declare and decide that these properties are not needed for city business, for municipal reasons, and so we need to ask that you pass a resolution to declare these properties surplus, that we don't need them anymore. And in both cases, we have, as required by the Bellingham Municipal Code, we have formed a real estate committee, which in, in these cases were Brian Henshaw, the Finance Director, Amy Cram from Legal, Rick Seppler, the Planning and Community Development Director, and myself. And so, we're bringing forward our recommendations to you this evening. We'll take them one at a time. We'll first do the Aloha. Darby will provide a little overview. We'll hold the hearing, and we'll ask that you take action, and then we'll move on to the Old Town property. So I'll turn it over to Darby.
Thank you. We'll see if I can make this work. All right. So first property on tonight's agenda, the former Aloha Motel property. I think most of you are familiar with the location within the Samish Way Urban Village. It's on Samish Way, about a mile away from downtown, the base of Seehome Arboretum. And the city initiated condemnation proceedings last year, and after a long process of litigation that ended up reaching a settlement agreement with the property owners, the city acquired the property on September 1st, so we now officially do own the property. Demolition is under, not underway, but the process of hiring a contractor to get the demolition underway is, is happening now. The, the city paid a negotiated fair market value for the property, which is required by the condemnation law. It ended up being $24 per square foot, which adds up to about $1.5 million. The property was purchased using funds from the 2012 housing levy, which you're all aware of. And so the proceeds of the sale and any overruns that occur, if the property is surplus and sold, would be used to pay back that fund unless affordable housing were constructed. The subject parcel has not ever been utilized for municipal purposes, although it has taken a lot of municipal resources, and it's not recommended for future municipal use. And the committee is recommending it be disposed through a request for proposals. So we have been working with the stakeholders in the area to develop criteria, and we'll be bringing that forward to you later this year. I think that's enough of an overview. If you have any questions, we can dive into it.
Okay. Yes, Tara?
So I hear that we can provide an overview of both properties and have one hearing?
Hearing, is that right? Okay, go ahead, then go to the next one, then. That's good.
Okay.
Thank you, Peter. Truncate. It's all about truncating.
Okay. So the other property is located in Old Town. We refer to this property as the Army Street Property. It is in a fantastic location across from the Old Town Cafe, the Oakland Block in Old Town. As I mentioned, we acquired this property in 1946 for $1,000. And again, we don't know exactly why or what fund, but- And again, we don't know exactly why or what fund, but in 2010, this parcel was transferred to the Bellingham Public Development Authority and then returned to the city in January of this year. We have been working on this request for proposals, and over the last couple or few months, we have been working on acquiring an easement. And Darby, if you wouldn't mind throwing up the other diagram there, just taking us a little longer to get to you in the year than I had hoped, but it is an easement that connects this property from Central Avenue to our site. So you see the site is adjacent to Holly, and then that's the easement. We have not yet acquired that, but we are hoping to bring that to you on October 26th. And that, what that does is it provides access to the site and kind of at grade behind the lot. There's a pretty steep topography here, and that access easement will provide multiple opportunities to access the site for parking. And we see a real advantage in doing that. The site, the part of the site that is closest to the railroad tracks, Darby, would you mind pointing out the back part of the site there? That site, we just closed on that and recorded that transaction on the 8th of October. That's a site that we acquired from the Port of Bellingham. And for those of you that were around when we did a land swap, this was a piece of real estate that the city could acquire at no cost. And that was part of the swap for the Colony Wharf property and the Cornwall Beach property. So it was from the Port of Bellingham. The two properties next to our site, it's hard to pick out probably on this slide here, but one's a very odd shaped, half of an arrow type shape property. And Darby, would you mind pointing that out? As well as the one adjacent to Army Street Right of Way. That one's owned by Trillium. Both property owners are willing sellers, and they've indicated to us that we can make that known in a request for development proposals. So rather than trying to create kind of a more complicated transaction, we've decided that we want to put our property on the market, and that's what we're recommending, and not complicate it with adjacent parcels, but let developers know that there are adjacent parcels that are willing sellers. So like the Aloha property, this site is within an adopted urban village. In this case, it's the Old Town Subarea Plan. And we developed a subarea plan that has the goals, objectives, policies, guidelines, development regulations. So we're just asking that any development proposals that come forward in both cases not only adhere to what we're seeking, but kind of maximize what we're hoping. So we're looking for density, but we're open in both cases to commercial or housing, or we'd love to see a hotel here. So we're pinky nose, we'd like to see a hotel in the downtown area. Yes. So with that, the committee in both cases are recommending that we go through a request for development proposals process, and then we will be bringing those back to you. You need to decide, it's your decision, on who we sell the property to. So this is just, the step that we're at tonight is just to declare that we don't need this for our purposes any longer.
Okay. Michael?
What about the Right of Way itself?
The Right of Way itself, we're expecting to probably keep that Right of Way for a while. We were thinking, and I know the PDA, the Public Development Authority, was thinking of vacating that and having development occur over that, which is certainly a possibility. But we have a major, I think it's sewer line, right Darby? Sewer line, I think it's a 30-something inch line. So it's, I think Ted's told me it handles about a third of our city's waste, so it's not a cheap move. If somebody wanted to develop an idea or they could afford to relocate that line, we'd certainly be open to it. But right now, we're expecting that that Right of Way is probably going to be maintained for the reality of what it's going to cost to build there or relocate.
Hey, Jack.
We could go and at least negotiate air rights and still be able to get equipment in there to deal with the sewer line if necessary.
We'd be open.
That was something that could have worked under the PDA approach, too. The other question I had, or well, yeah, I guess it's a question. I'm really concerned about the fact that the subarea plans that we did for both Old Town and Samish, while they were well done, their one critical element was kind of missing, and that was minimum heights on buildings. And you said that you would prefer to have density, but there's not going to be any sort of requirement. And I'm wondering whether or not we could go and put into an RFP that there would be a minimum either density or a minimum floor count that would be part of the RFP response.
Well, ultimately, you decide what minimum is when it comes back to you, but in the case of this site here on Army Street, we are saying a minimum of four stories is preferred. That's what we'd like to see. And was it about the same for Aloha?
I think up to five.
Okay, so you're saying that you are going to write that into the RFP?
Yes. We've drafted them.
Okay, and then with the Aloha site, would you do the same thing there?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing. You can comment on either one of them. Did anybody sign up down there? Nobody? Darby will check it, see if anybody signed up. Okay, anybody wishing to come up to the microphone and comment?
Wendy Harris, I'm opposed to both of these surplus actions.
Don't worry about that tonight.
For different reasons. You basically used eminent domain or a form of eminent domain on the Aloha Hotel because of public health and safety. And I know the public was very supportive of that, but the one concern that I heard raised consistently was, well, just as long as I don't turn around and sell it to developers. And I think this is an opportunity for the city to hold on to that property and use it for something we really need, which is affordable housing, particularly for the homeless or low income. I'd really like, I think that's a better use. And I think that you'll have more support going forward in the future if you need to take more of these actions. And with regards to the property down on the waterfront, I think that's crazy. I think you're nuts. I don't think we should be developing right next to oil trains that are exploding in other communities and killing people and property. And when was the last time it happened? Very recently. And we are at a special risk because we're talking about property that's on fill, that's rated for high seismic activity, and a little ways on one direction of that property, you have those diesel tanks from Enkogen that are going to cause any kind of explosion to get worse. And if you go the other way towards F Street, you got a gas station. It's not a safe situation. And so if you're going forward with that, I suggest you talk to your attorney about increasing your liability insurance, because if somebody gets hurt and their family sues you guys, they're going to really want to be paid because you knew about the risks. It's well-known. All you have to do is pick up the paper. When we first started planning the waterfront, this wasn't an issue. And it isn't an issue that we caused, but nevertheless, it's there. We can't control the railroad, but we certainly can control our development. And I don't think we should be putting people in harm's way for something that we know is such a large risk. And you're going to have to deal with that time and time again with the waterfront. And I know with the OSO slide, with the litigation that's going on, one of the issues that's being looked at is the fact that the county was on notice that that was a public safety issue, and they allowed development to occur. You're on notice that those oil trains have been exploding all over the place and killing people, and this is a particularly sensitive area. So I'd ask that you not do that and take some time and consider what you can do with that property. That is not going to increase public health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Come on, Paul.
Thank you. Paul Schisler, Bellingham resident. Wanted to comment on the North Samish property in particular. I think whenever the city council and city hall have a chance to consider selling or trading or giving away property, that the city can make community housing a priority. I think it's a smart public policy that when you're surplusing property, that you prioritize community housing that working people and other low-income households can afford. In the staff report, item L and M indicate that the surplusing decision doesn't include that prioritization of community housing. So maybe that comes later, maybe that's part of the RFP process. But I would ask that the city council consider adopting a policy that would say, whenever there is underutilized publicly-owned property to be disposed of, declared surplus, sold or traded or given away, that you try to get the mix of housing that the community really needs. The market rate developers are able to supply market rate rental housing and ownership housing, so there's not much need for the city to intervene there. But it's the below-market rate housing that we have a huge shortage of. And you know way better than me what an impact that has on the city budgets, with now over half the city general fund going to law and justice and public safety spending. Small amount, including the value of land, could be used to help us get to the housing mix that we really need. The housing mix that we really need is based on the incomes that we have in this community, and a lot of those incomes cannot afford a market rate apartment. You need to earn $18 an hour or more full-time to afford a two-bedroom apartment in Waukesha County. That's an $18 an hour housing wage, and the average renter earns about $12 an hour. So work in full-time. A person can't afford to live here, yet they need to work here. So I think whenever the city has land available for non-municipal use, it's a golden opportunity for this to be a municipal project. Yes, you can invite proposals, but you can invite proposals that get the mix of housing that we really need. In this case, the Aloha motel property is relatively expensive after you remediate and demolish, and maybe market rate developers won't even be able to afford to build there without subsidy. So if there's going to be subsidy, I think it ought to be for housing that local workers can afford, people who work nearby, who otherwise can't afford market rate housing. Actually, you know, it's an opportunity to do a showcase project. What we need are excellent showcase projects where the private sector and the public sector and the mission-driven housing developers all work together to put forward a proposal. But your request for proposal needs to call for that and say what you really need, what the community really needs, and that's a mix of housing that won't be delivered unless the city offers some help. The market rate housing is getting developed downtown and elsewhere, but that's not affordable for over half the renters who live here. So what we really need is more housing that local renters can afford. And having publicly-owned land is one of the few things that you have at your disposal to help make that happen. So if not tonight, in your decision to surplus the property, indicating what your policy preference is, at a later date in the process, if you could make clear that what you would like to see is a mix of housing, maybe some market rate housing, but a mix of housing that really delivers what we really need. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now, Peter, we vote on these separately, right? There's two separate resolutions. So the first one up is the 315 North Samish Way. Yes, sir.
Can we get staff's take on the two comments that we received?
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. I do want to speak to the affordable housing comments. The city acquired the Aloha property utilizing the housing levy fund. And we did that because we thought that this might be a good location for affordable housing. But what the committee and the administration is recommending is that we don't preclude other options at this point. We want to leave that open so that we can see what the market is looking at in this neighborhood. So if we end up selling, if you end up choosing a developer that's not going to provide affordable housing, then we will use the proceeds from the sale of the property to repay the housing levy. So I think that we certainly have set a precedence for wanting to see that. We know of a housing developer that does want and is most likely going to submit a proposal that would be interested in low-income housing and probably a range. We also heard, and Darby, reaching out to the neighborhoods of Seehome and York, that they did not want to preclude other options. So that's why, that's why we're recommending being more open, knowing, you know, it's your community development division that is overseeing this process, and we have numerous goals that we're trying to achieve here. So, and in the case of Old Town, we just think we need to be open to all options as well.
Roxanne?
I'd like to move that we pass the resolution to surplus certain real property at 301 and 315 North Samish Way.
Second.
Same was to be made, second. Another question, Terry?
Not a question, just a comment that, you know, I understand Mr. Schisler's comments on it, but I also understand that this property can provide, I think we need to leave options open, because this property can be the anchor piece to kick off the redevelopment of the Samish Way Urban Village. And we've been looking for that kind of project that would provide that anchor, much like what we did with redevelopment in the downtown when we were able to do some work. And so I think it's really necessary to leave open to find out what's available to do in that property, but I'm definitely supporting.
Dan, and then Jack.
So I just want to remind folks that we live in a community where about two-thirds of the folks that live here can't afford to buy a home, and I realize that this is rental, this is a little bit different. But if you look just at rental market, the vacancy rate is 0.5% for a one-bedroom and same for a studio apartment. And so housing is, affordable housing is a real issue in our community, and I do want to make sure that the affordability piece is provided for, at least in some context. We have what are called CHODOs, or Community Housing Development Organizations. There are a couple represented in Bellingham. I want to understand where in the process where we can invite those organizations to the table to see what the options would be. And I'm not saying that the complete property should be comprised totally of affordable housing, although I wouldn't object to that, but I would want to see a proposal, or I would want to see the likelihood of a proposal that could include mixture. And where in the process does that accommodate, that's not in this proposal here?
That would be through the request for development proposals, as we'd be looking at the merits of what's being presented to us. Between now and that opportunity, though, is staff will be bringing... Between now and that opportunity, though, is staff will be bringing some modifications to the multifamily tax exemption program to you as directed by you. We're finding actually that some work that the Opportunity Council did for us on the local market, we're actually finding that rents in these districts are below... they're affordable to those below eighty percent and just up of sixty percent of median income. So it's very different in the rental market than it is in the single-family market. So we are finding actually, though, that what's being offered in our urban villages is in that kind of sixty to eighty threshold at market rate. So you'll see a recommendation from us here soon on, kind of digging a little bit deeper to get to that sixty percent for that incentive, which we will make available both in Old Town and Samish Way.
And that's a sixty to eighty percent AMI?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this isn't speaking to the motion, but under old and new business, I want to bring up the issue about the... I mean, we tackled inclusionary zoning a few years ago, right at the height of the recession, and we came back with a staff report saying that inclusionary zoning that requires affordable housing to be built with new construction wasn't feasible at that time. I think it's time to go and relook and reexamine that. I don't think it's appropriate for this particular project. I think the way it's set up right now will work, but I think, community-wide, we should really be looking at this issue again.
Okay, on the issue, I mean, the motion been made second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven-zero. Now on to the real property at 315 West Holly Street. Okay.
I move that we surplus certain real property at 315 West Holly Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made second. Any discussion, Jack?
Wendy's point is valid as far as the oil trains, and I take this from personal experience. I've seen this twice now, where I've been driving down Roder Avenue and a train has been keeping up with me speed-wise. And while they're supposed to, I don't know if it's twenty or twenty-five, Ted, but it's either one of those, it's either twenty miles an hour or twenty-five miles an hour. I was going thirty-four miles an hour, and the train and I were keeping up at the same clip. So obviously, there is not really an adherence to the speed limits that trains are supposed to go through on that. Depending on the hazardous components of the cargo, it can't create problems. I don't know if it really has much bearing on this one particular project as it does the entire community, but I really do see like, you know, that we need to be at least addressing that. I'm not sure, Mary, how we go and deal with speed issues on trains.
Well, let's not get into that. I mean, that doesn't have anything to do with this...
I think, Jack, why don't we have Ted answer that question for you?
Okay.
Yeah, we can discuss this later, but we need to discuss...
When you bring it up at new business.
Yeah, okay. Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you very much. Now we will go to our council standing committees. The first committee is Public Works Public Safety chaired by Terry Bornham.
Thank you, Gene. We had... What did we have today? We had three items before the committee. Let me get to that. The first item was a presentation by city staff showing how new bike boxes, shared lane markings, green boxes, and buffer bike lanes and bike detector symbols work. They were looking at Ohio Street as the model, because that's the latest that has the new installations. It was an interesting presentation. It was for information only. I would recommend people to look over the presentation because for some people, it has been confusing, and I likened it much to, much like when we started putting roundabouts in and we got other complaints. Initially, people were confused by the roundabouts because they hadn't used roundabouts, and now the roundabouts are working great, and we don't hear those kind of complaints. In fact, we hear, oh, it's really moved traffic along, and I think that's what we will be seeing as people get used to something new on our streets. It'll make the use of cars and bikes more compatible, hopefully, and work better. And this was for information only. The second item before us today was an update from the Bellingham Fire Department on the Fire Department's Training Division regarding the new firefighter recruit academy. Captain Eric Postma, the drill master, presented this afternoon. We have nine new recruits in the academy, ranging from ages twenty-three to thirty-four. Passage of this training fulfills firefighter one and two requirements. The recruits are halfway through training right now, and they'll be looking at the graduation coming up on November twentieth. Again, this was for information only, and I do look forward to meeting the new trainees as they move into our fire department. The next item was a bid award for City Hall accessibility renovation. The City Hall accessibility renovations are required to correct deficiencies identified in the HUD survey and must be completed prior to March 2016. The work involves several items, including handrails for the exterior ADA ramp at the northwest entrance, elevator call buttons height adjustments, two drinking fountain accessibility requirements, hand-rail upgrade in the grades in the county council chambers, handrails in the east and west stairwell, and replacing non-compliant door hardware on accessibility routes. The city received one bid, which was publicly opened on September 23, 2015. Tiger Construction from Everson, Washington was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid at one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, fifty dollars, including any applicable Washington state taxes or use tax. The engineer's estimate was one-hundred-and-ten-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Staff had... I'd asked a question about the discrepancies between the estimate and the amount, and this was the only bidder, and staff had reached out to other construction companies, and there were nobody else submitted, and it's something that we need to get done. So committee did recommend approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven-zero.
End of committee report.
Thank you, Terry. Next, Lake Waukam Reservoir Natural Resources Committee, Dan Hamels, the chair.
Thank you, Eugene. We had one item before us this afternoon. It was for information only. This was a report out from the Lake Waukam Policy Group from the October fifth meeting. In the report, there are two items. First one was discussion of city council proposal on cost recovery in the aquatic invasive species program. The policy group heard a summary of a proposed resolution being discussed by the city council regarding cost recovery in the AIS program. During reviews of program operations, members of the city council have continued to ask for more cost recovery and recently voted to ask staff to bring back, for their consideration, a resolution to increase cost recovery to forty-five percent in 2016 and sixty percent in 2017, and that the program be funded from sources other than the water fund after 2017. Equity to ratepayers is one goal of the proposal. Right now, all ratepayers are paying for a program to benefit recreational users of the lake, which is our source of drinking water. Staff briefly discussed the state's program. Washington's program is minimal when compared to adjoining states, and while there have been good proposals introduced in the last few legislative sessions to improve this, the legislature has not had the votes to pass these. One limitation in the local program is that there are about one-hundred possible sites for launching boats when all possible private launch points are included. There was also some concern expressed over the risk from vacation rental by owner properties with boat launches that attract out-of-area boaters who are unaware of our local requirements. Policy group members requested that staff consider and bring back some options to increase cost recovery, such as a fee increase for motorized boats that would be waived if boaters took the education course. Second item was the update on land management issues. The city has developed a forest management plan for its properties that prioritizes water quality and habitat protection. There are requests for the creation of a trail connection through city-owned properties, including a possible connector of the Bay to Baker Trail. The county is conducting a public process with stakeholders while developing its plans for a new county park on the reconveyed DNR lands. A more detailed overview and discussion of the county parks plan will be brought back to the policy group at a later date. The next policy group meeting will be on November 2, 2015, at 2:30 p.m., City of Bellingham Fireplace Room, 625 Hallock Street. End of report. End of committee.
Thank you, Dan. The next committee is Finance and Personnel chaired by Pinky Vargas.
Thank you, Gene. We had one item in front of us today, ordinance amending the 2015-26 budget. We had a little presentation by Fire Chief Bill Newbold. This is about the Fire Department being awarded a FEMA assistance grant to purchase heavy-duty extrication tools, other words, known as jaws of life. And federal award funding is authorized at fifty-four-thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars with a non-federal commitment of five-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, and the committee unanimously recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. End of committee. Thank you very much. We now go committee the whole. We had five items. The first item is a briefing on an update of the city's critical area ordinance, Bellingham Municipal Code sixteen-point-five-five. The Pliant Community Development Department is performing an update to the city's critical areas ordinance. The intent of this briefing was to describe the city council, the process that has been undertaken in order to present the proposed update to city council, the public hearing scheduled for November ninth, 2015, at 7 p.m. in the council chambers. We heard from Rick Sepler, Steve Sundine, and Kim Wheel, and that will be coming back to us on November ninth. Rick, I need to ask you a question about this, since it was brought up tonight. After we have the public hearing, are you going to be looking for a decision, or will that go to a work session, therefore, we can have further discussion, as Ms. Harris was talking about tonight?
It's likely best for council to consider comments that are raised, identify questions, likely go to committee.
Okay.
And the committee would then be able to respond to the questions on point.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This was information only. The next was an update on jail facility use agreements, starting on page forty-two. We did receive a letter from Jack Louse going over the proposal we sent over. It is obvious we're not going to come to any negotiated settlement before the end of the year or before the voting takes place in November. So we're kind of in a wait-and-see mode, what happens there. If it passes, we have to negotiate. If it doesn't pass, we have to negotiate. So we're going to be negotiating one way or another, so that's just the way it's going to be. Okay, the next item was a resolution regarding proposed Waukam Charter amendment, Waukam County Charter amendments. In front of us tonight, we have two resolutions that were drafted after our afternoon session today. The first one is a draft resolution, City Council, regarding Waukam Proposition One, Waukam County Proposition Two, and Waukam County Proposition Three. I'll just read the last, whereas the Bellingham City Council finds that propositions one, two, and three, if approved, would be harmful to voting rights in the context of elections for Waukam County council members, and would have a particularly harmful impact on the voting rights of Bellingham voters. We talked about this this afternoon, and the committee recommend that we send this out, and I so move. Second. Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. The next one is a resolution, City Council, Bellingham, regarding Waukam County Proposition Nine, which relates to the charter, and I will go back to... It relates to the number of Waukam County districts at large positions, and I'll read the last, whereas the Bellingham City Council finds a five-district proposal contained in Proposition Nine, if approved, would have a positive impact on representation on the Waukam County Council based on existing communities of related mutual interest. We did have a motion, and it did pass four to three, so I will let somebody else move it tonight, since I don't want to move it and then vote against it. I'm not going to be one of those, I voted for it before I voted against it.
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion been made?
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Michael?
I just want to repeat my afternoon comments that although I think Prop Nine is a nice idea, I just didn't want to vote for it as a city council member, as advice to the public.
Yep. Terry?
Well, same with me. I might vote for it on the ballot, but I don't... I think the current system with three districts works just fine. As it currently works, we've watched people... council change over time, back and forth in terms of conservative, more moderate, and back... It seems to work, so I don't see where this would affect our citizens like the other ones did. So I'm voting no for it as a city councilman, because I don't... But as an individual, I don't have any problem with it. It might work out well.
Okay. I agree with Michael and Terry. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries four to three. We don't have any night minutes tonight. Hold a new business. Roxanne.
Well, for those who didn't get a chance to see what happened this morning, we had a really special celebration. So one year ago on this day, your city council approved replacing Columbus Day with Coast Salish Day. And so it was very exciting for us to host a really nice ceremony where so many different community members came together. We had a pretty packed council chambers. We had some great drummer groups, some great speakers. And a key announcement that Terry Bornham made is that we will be changing the name of Indian Street to Billy Frank Junior Street, and so this was extremely well-received. And I just want to express that so many of the speakers showed their support for the Bellingham City Council for both of these name changes, and they offered great thanks for that, for supporting the tribal culture and our tribal ways. And I just want to thank everybody that attended and made this event so special. So, heis kaseem. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry?
And I would like to thank council member Murphy for the amazing job she did in organizing this. It was really well-organized, well-done, and congratulations for doing a great job on it. And one other item that I brought up this morning is that we will... An item we voted on this morning that I brought up was an ordinance that we will be considering at the first meeting in November, the protection of the Cree and War Children's Memorial in Big Rock Garden Park.
Okay, Jack?
Thank you, Gene. First of all, after old and new business, we do have some minutes apparently to approve.
Where? Okay. Which night is it? Which date? Which date?
For...
September twentieth. Okay. Why don't we vote on those now, and then we'll get them out of the way?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made in second, and for September twentieth, I probably have them here somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you, Jack. Go ahead.
Thank you. So again, as I was mentioning earlier with inclusionary zoning, we had quite a bit of work that was done by staff on looking at the possibilities of that, and once again, it was during the recession. And what I'd like to ask is to see if we could ask our planning director to reconsider that and to come back with a recommendation of whether or not we should actually consider that again as a possible tool for affordable housing in our community. So I would like to ask, or I would like to move that we would direct staff to come back to us with recommendations of whether or not we should proceed with additional work associated with inclusionary zoning.
Mr. Chair?
Let's see if we have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion been made in second?
So are we asking that it come back to committee of the whole for a discussion? Because that would be, we can do that easily, if you guys want to ask questions of the planning director, or whatever you decide to do. Because I didn't think I heard you say ordinance or something like that right now. Just a discussion.
No, I'm not, no, just a discussion.
Whether or not to proceed.
Okay.
Which would take more than the rest of this year, I'm sure. It would be something that we'd probably have to look at next year, because it's going to take, yeah. Michael?
Yeah, as Jack indicated, the reason why that idea fell apart is that at that time in the economy, the incentive structure just wasn't right. And adding any affordable housing element made the economics go south. Things are different now, so it's really kind of a reanalysis of that question, which would help us to decide whether or not we could go forward this year or next year. I mean, you know.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, the study, the study was done. It was, you know, we ended up, or at least the ones that were on council at the time, we ended up having chats to look at it. There were assumptions in that study that were based on the current economics at that time. Obviously, everything has changed. The tools are there.
I don't want to hash it all out tonight, but...
No, but that's, I'm just saying that...
But we have three new council members also, that are going to have to take a look at it, too. So I don't want to rush anything through. I mean, we have, we have time to do it or not. Go ahead, Rick.
What I could suggest is a return that frames the issue, talks about the changed circumstances. RCW 3678-540 allows it explicitly. The challenge is that you have to find concurrent upzones when you adopt the ordinance. So it's one thing to get the policy base to say, yes, we wish to do it. The other is to determine where and how to implement it. So with your permission, and indeed in direction, if council agrees, I'll review the report, outline the steps, and talk about the process that would be taken. Agreed, there have been significant changed circumstances. The most definitive studies were all 2007, 2008, and stopped right about that time. So it's recurring in other communities.
The one interesting part of it is that there's, I think there's over 130 communities in the country that have programs like this, that have been working for years.
Any further discussion? I don't mind, I haven't taken another look at it. I mean, I'm not going to commit one way or another, but I'll go ahead and vote for it, just so we can have the discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Anything else under hold a new business? Okay, we will go to the executive session report. We had two items, potential litigation. Staff provide information on a potential litigation matter involving property located at 2626 Iron Street. Action, 2626 Iron Street in Bellingham, Washington. Action. At this time, I would entertain a motion to authorize the legal department to file a civil nuisance abatement action with respect to this property.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And the last item was potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on potential property acquisition. Direction given. No action taken. Mayor's report. You're on.
Oh, I'm on.
See, you don't listen to a thing I say up here, do you? You're just...
I said to Rick, "Good night," and that was...
I know. Go ahead. It doesn't matter.
Okay, I don't actually have a mayor's report tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
But wait.
Wait, wait, wait.
Two for the price of wine. No. But what I do, did hear is some comments you made, and I'd like to ask if the council... First of all, when Rick does his presentation, as you all know, the critical areas ordinance has been looked over by DOE, too.
Yes.
So I'm, I was wondering, I'm sure that they would be happy to be here, so you could ask them questions about it, too.
Sure.
I think that might be helpful.
Yep.
And then, secondly, we're talking about, you know, the old town suburban village, urban village plan, and the Sandmish Way one. And I was wondering if you might want to have something in committee of the whole, an update or a review of those two plans, because not all of you were on the council when we did those. And it might give you a better idea of what we've adopted, and what you can ask, you can ask questions about it. Now, some of you were here before, but there are some new people. So I don't, I don't, if you're interested, that might be helpful before we do some of this development.
Okay. It's riveting. It really is.
It is riveting.
It is. No, it is. I'm saying, yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention, you know, about the critical areas ordinance. Now, the last, as Jane will remember, the last, the last time, when we did the last review, it was much more than a review. We went over everything that the council, and we had a whole series of meetings, and brought it up-to-date in compliance with all state regulations, and really worked it through thoroughly. So that's why they're able to do at this point, you know, just updates on it, because there was so much work done with it, and so many comments from the business development community, the environmental community, and working on what the current draft is, when we redid that whole thing.
It's been pretty well-perceived as the gold standard of critical areas ordinances. So ecology and the rest of them are very impressed with it. Okay, thank you, Mayor. That was easy. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And we come down to, we don't have any final consideration of ordinances?
We got one?
Yeah, we got two.
Yes, we do.
Right in front of me.
Yes.
What agenda are you using? I'm, yeah, I'm on a different agenda, obviously. Final consideration of ordinances. Yeah, I guess I'm in my own little world.
Agenda Bill 20981, in ordinance adding transportation network companies, amending Chapter 6.54, and adopting a new Chapter 6.55 of the Bellingham Municipal Code.
Move third and final.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Under the discussion, Roxanne.
I would like to move that, that we amend the section of the ordinance, 6.55.070, Section A, to read the TNC and slash/or TNC driver. So the change is the and slash/or.
I'll second it.
Motion been made in second? I'm sorry, Peter.
I just, I would be happy to offer some thoughts from an enforcement perspective.
Go ahead.
Okay, so whenever we have an entity or a person who we're trying to regulate, the most important thing is to have it really clear who has to comply with the ordinance. By inserting and slash/or, you really create a lot of ambiguity. And is it and or is it or? And we really try to avoid and slash/or, especially when you're talking about saying who is the person responsible to comply with the act. Secondly, it would require redrafting other portions of the ordinance, because as part of the certification process, the TNC has to come in and swear to certain things. This creates ambiguity as to whether, is it the TNC that has to, is it the driver? And lastly, the RCW actually makes it clear that the driver, it's not like there has to be duplicate insurance in this circumstance. The RCW that's incorporated into the ordinance already specifies that it can be complied with by either the TNC or the driver obtaining the proper insurance.
That's confusing to me, then, because you just said either/or, and that's and slash/or.
So if you, if you want to have the ability to enforce this against the TNC, if you insert and slash/or, in this ordinance, this ordinance won't be enforceable locally, because it'll be ambiguous as to who has to comply. But it incorporates the RCW by basically saying that it will be satisfied if you comply with the RCW. But if we put in and/or, it is unclear, and keep in mind that we try to incorporate the RCW as much as we can, but we're also trying to have local enforcement. We're having certification at a local level. We're having the affidavit filed at the local level. And so you would be creating a lot of ambiguity with respect to the insurance provision if you make it and slash/or.
Could you just...
Yeah.
It should, it just, the mayor asked me the question, what should it be? I think it's fine the way it is. I don't think the transportation network company will have any problems complying following their regular business model. And in fact, I think this all started off with some reference to a Vancouver model, and I believe that Vancouver language had and, it's both the TNC and the driver that has to comply.
Jack, excuse me. Jack?
To me, this, this whole process is really not, I don't know, it's not really a way that we do things, to go and accept amendments from the, from the primary beneficiary of an ordinance this late in the game. If this was really an issue, it should have been brought up a while back, but to go and bring it up at the very last, you know, the 11th hour, the way that it has, and then to hear from our staff, the legal department, that we have real major issues with it, we should either withdraw the ordinance or vote against it. I will be voting against it.
You mean the amendment?
Off the record.
Oh, no, we're not going to. Go ahead, Roxanne. No, Michael, you had your hand up first.
It's a small point. By the way, Jack, I agree with your sentiments. It's kind of a funny way to be legislating. But I thought there were slightly separate insurance requirements for the driver that didn't apply to the network company. That is, the driver needed to have some independent level of insurance for when they were not actually taking rides. And then a new level of insurance came in place when they were taking rides, and that insurance involved the TNC. So I think and is appropriate, because they're not talking about just one kind of insurance. You're talking about both entities being insured, or both entities insuring the one entity in two different ways. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Roxanne.
I think we should gather community input all the way up until we vote on this stuff. Otherwise, why do we do readings? And I am willing to listen to our staff, and I would like to remove my amendment and just keep it as it is, and go to third and final.
Okay. We are in third and final, and roll call. Yes, go ahead.
Um, this will be no surprise. I'll be voting no tonight. It's not because I'm against rideshare companies, and I wish Uber success. I just don't think we handled certain key issues in this ordinance very well. So my objection is more to the particulars of the ordinance rather than to rideshare companies.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none? All those in favor? Roll call, I'm sorry. My goodness. It's about that time, Jack. Get the hammer out. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?
No.
Terry Bornerman?
Aye.
Dan Hamel?
Aye.
Jane Knudsen?
Aye.
Michael Illaquist?
No.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Ordinance passes five-two. Agenda Bill 20987, in ordinance amending the 2015-2016 adopted budget, recognizing $8,640 grant revenue to the Bellingham Police Department, general fund, and appropriating $8,642, or $40 in related expenditures.
Move third and final.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Jack Weiss?[1725.83]